If I could have everyone's attention, our executive director came up with a novel idea of going ahead and starting the meeting. We'll do our preliminary roll calls and I'll start going through the agenda items. When we get to the end, we just simply won't take motions until our other member gets here. So we're gonna wing it. If we mess up, nobody will know because we've never done this before. But it's a way to get started, so we're not boring everybody just sitting here. So I guess I gotta run the meeting since he's not here either. So I'll call the July meeting of the area planning commission to order a nibero call. We do not have a forum yet, but as stated, we anticipate having one shortly. If I could ask everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. We won't consider the previous minutes until our other board member gets here or the status report. Don't think we have any public comments on the non-agenda. We do not, okay? Executive Director's report. Anything for you, Sidney? Okay. And we did have one administrative subdivision approved. That was docket number 41, which does not require us to take action. So we will proceed to the first item on the agenda under city rezonings, docket number 45, special ordinance number 17, 2024, 3010 South 7th Street, with C2 to C3 regional commerce district.
The property owner is Carl Ross. Both units are sales, both owning C3 regional commerce district. Current owner is C2 Limited Community Commerce District, represented by Mr. Felling. The property is located on the south corner of 7th and 8th Avenue, then at 3010 South 7th Street. It has C2 from R1 to the north, C3 to the west, 1 and R1 to the south, C3 and R1 to the east. Fishers are requesting to give the property for all of those deals. The fisher also requests the abandoned railroad property that is already closed, currently leased for car sales. I believe the city is in the worst of permitting in this situation with the abandoned law in between the parcels. The parcel number on the petition for, but the legal disbursement request. The parcel numbers within the petition also match what it is. I think it has the law on top of it. The property has points that I can all cite. There are things for the Department of Area Planning to be discussed. How often do they function? They also sit in the area meeting to discuss the state or person who's in the area. Staff representatives, people, they purchase the order print from the Department of Area Planning. Area, the area's, the area's road, the road road is not specified in this form.
Mr. Felling?
Good evening. How is everyone?
Perfect.
I'm ready to go home and celebrate the fourth.
We are too.
I'll be fast. I'm here tonight representing Colonel Ross. And my name is Eddie Felling with Lyndon Felling Law Firm. It's very straightforward. Again, there are several C3 that's surrounding this area. It's already being currently used as a car lot. We've been in the discussions with the city about resolving. If you have the map, there is an odd old diagonal running rail spur in this area that's been abandoned. Our plan is after, assuming this gets through both area planning and city council next week, we're gonna go in and try and get that property reverted back to my client. Part of the holdup and the bigger picture was we didn't want to get sideways with the city with the new trail system that we're hoping to put in. So we've had some good talks. I think we've got a way to work it out so we're not stepping on each other's toes with regard to getting the property, the abandoned railroad issue taken care of. I talked to Mr. Ross the first time I walked in my office. I said, "You've got a problem." He said, "What's that?" I said, "Your lot is gravel on that site." He said, "No problem at all. I've already got quotes." I talked to Mr. Ross today. He is prepared to have them start working on that within the next week. So the lot will be paved, but we will not be coming back asking for variance for non-harm service parking. So all these conditions that are set forth in here, we'll be happy to oblige.
Okay. Any questions from anyone on the planning commission? Nope? Anyone here speaking in opposition to this proposal? Seeing none, we'll move on and we'll come back to this as soon as our board members hear for motion.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item under city rezonings, docket number 49, special ordinance number 11, 2024, 2904 Fenwood Avenue, from an M2 to an R1, single-family district.
This petition and the next one are kind of along the lines of what we've seen a couple times here where they're originally zoned at two, they need to be re-zoned to M1, so that would be original zoning. So they're just trying to rent to a client, or to a single-family. And you do have a letter here from Councilperson Lateral, for her, in support of the report. The property owner is David and Christina Wetter. Both units are family residences, both owning R1, both looking to residence, he is then a business district. The common address is 2904, and it has M2, the more, and R1 to the south. Fishers are requesting to rezone the property to the two, the two R1s, the family residences. The property is currently zoned at two, but the property is affected by the, the, the area, the whole homes are ready to be re-zoned, right, plus, to the left. Because the surrounding property, the property must be recreated, the government requires surrounding, the way it was being righted, the, the, had a positive report, this, this is also, this is a, 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 the, 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 the.
Mr. Wright? Thank you, commission members. Michael Wright, city attorney, and Michelle Edwards, city clerk. His staff laid out, this is an issue that you've seen before. Special ordinance one in 1950 took several lots in that were not ultimately utilized by public service and are burdened with that M2 classification when they've never been anything but single-family residences. These next two applications before you are exactly that. For brevity, that's all we've got.
Okay.
And we do have one more coming in August.
Okay.
And this is all within two or three houses from each other.
Okay.
Any questions for either of the remaining on the planning commission?
I don't have any questions, but maybe just a quick clarification. These are, you know, generally, these people find these homes hard to sell or hard to finance. It is a single-family use, it always has been. It's a pretty hefty burden placed on them.
That's right. It is a, something that was definitely unintended, but it does create headaches for homeowners when they go to, yeah, lending institutions or, you know, any service provider that is, has to, you know, beef up when they're on M2 properties. So it's something that was created by a map and has never been in, never had any place in reality of what that property's been used for, so.
No questions from the planning commission? Is there anyone here speaking in opposition to this proposal? If not, since Mr. Falk is present and we now have, and we now have a forum, I could even entertain a motion. So I can entertain a motion.
Remove to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Your motion passes.
Thank you.
That was one. That was one. So now city rezonings, docket number 50, special ordinance number 13, 2024, 2924 Fenwood Avenue, from an M2 to an R1, single-family district.
The property owner is Sandra Gray, both units are family residences, both owning R1s, both looking to residence, are zoning to, I mean, it's, it's, it has, I will very detailed present, if that would like to be left. However, this property is not a family lot size, they will need to request variance for small size, so the staff and the department here, they will, they, the following business is that that, 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 we're, 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 we're,
Those conditions are agreeable.
Okay. Any questions? Anyone in opposition to this? I'll entertain a motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. So I don't get confused. Let's go back to Mr. Felling's, docket number 45. Do we have a motion on that? Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. We will. We'll do that pass. We won't form with that. We'll go on to subdivisions, minor, primary, secondary, docket number 42, file number 25-24, Erie's, two-lot subdivision. Is the petitioner present?
Hey. I've never done this before. Basically, I'm wanting to cut my property in half. My sister is moving back to Terre Haute from Kansas, and she's wanting to build a house. We had it surveyed. I actually had Dave Schu come out. He put in a septic for me years ago, just to make sure the elevation levels were there. And he says that he can do it. So there shouldn't be any problem with putting a septic in.
Okay. Any questions from anyone on the planning commission? Anyone here speaking in opposition to this? I'll entertain a motion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Quickly, let's run back so I don't forget. Do we have a motion on the minutes and status report from the previous meeting?
So move.
Those in favor?
Aye.
And we need a motion on the executive director's report and assistant director's report. Those in favor?
Aye.
I think we're caught up. Docket number 43, file number 26, 2024, Derrickson Ross Batten Stewart Complex.
The property has front lawn or front street, so that will probably, probably, and, and , people lots, acres, it's a, the advocates request a subdivide, parent tract, able to , to, 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 to.
Is the petitioner present? Come on up.
Hi. I spoke with area planning and I'm withdrawing this because of what they're saying. I truly believe what you're saying is true. But I will put in another application to be able to build three individual homes on those lots instead, instead of duplexes, thus making it a smaller community and less offensive to the environment.
Okay. So you want us to withdraw this?
Yes.
Not even necessary. But she may want to change the configuration. If you're...
So I just thought I'd start all over again. It'll cost me money, but I'll start all over again for the three homes to be built there. I have, and I had brought things to let the people who are very concerned, and I love these people. I grew up with them and I don't want, and I've been on that land, my family, 150 years too. So I truly understand what they're saying. So I brought pictures to show them what the houses would look like and that I've made sure that they would look exactly like all the other homes out there so it wouldn't be offensive. And so, and the configuration of where they would be laid out and things. Mr. Little did the surveying and things. I'm hoping I don't have to do the resurveying again because that was quite expensive. That was close to $5,000. But I did speak with the water company. They came out, the well drillers, that, the names that area planning had given me. Septic tanks have been looked at and where they could go for either or. The water has been looked at. There will not be a problem with, I understand what Mike is talking about because I grew up out there too and we did run short on water, but his well is only 30 feet. My old well from my house was only 25. But the well gentleman that digs the well let me know that he would put in 80 feet deep wells that would not sap any water off of Mike Russell's well and that would be okay, that it would not cause any problem with well water. That his water has to do with also that he has quite a few cattle that he waters off of his, his well. And he also farms my family's 35 acres and his wife, they said when I was there explaining to them what it was I was trying to do, that he also irrigates or kind of puts water on the, I would say, close to 100 acres that he farms out there. So that uses quite a bit of his water also. So I don't think that mine, since they'll be 80 feet down in the ground, down to the water level, that it'll hurt their water at all. So the septic tanks have been discussed and, and then the soil specialist went out and she looked and she did 15 samples of this soil in all three areas where the duplexes or the houses would go. And she approved that and said there was nothing wrong with that also. So I've done, and I want everybody to know that here, I did not do this before as if I was going to be able to do it. I did it according to what area planning told me to do, that they had to have these things done before my application could even be put in. So I did not just go and, and survey just because I wanted to survey. I did not go and have the land marked off or the wells looked at and all of that. That had to be done in order to put in the application. So that's why I did those. It wasn't like I was trying to shove anything down anyone's throat. I wanted to see whether I could do that and it was necessary for the area planning's agenda. They gave me a checklist and I followed the checklist.
Is it still your desire to withdraw this at this time and give yourself a chance to re-go on what you're doing with single-family homes or do you want to proceed with the subdivision?
You mean the duplexes?
Not the duplexes. You weren't doing the duplexes tonight anyway. Your application simply divided the property into, into three more lots.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we were not, we were not discussing approving or denying duplexes. We can't do that on the subdivision. That's a rezoning.
Mm-hmm.
So we're happy if you want to withdraw it and give yourself an opportunity to rethink. If you're gonna do three single fam, if you wanted any three single-family homes, you may well want to look at how you lay them out because if we subdivide it, you know, if you change it, you have to subdivide it again. The subdivision just simply means you own three parcels of ground that total the same as what you own to people. Doesn't allow you to do anything else on it. Still, still zone day one. So it's your pleasure, what we do to not...
I'd like to just go ahead forward then.
You want to go in...
Yes, because the way they subdivided it, it would be the same anyway.
Okay. That's fine.
Yeah. Because of the fact that we have a gully on one side, a ravine in the back, and a small gully on the other side, as you can see, I don't know if you guys have the aerial vision of it. Yeah. So they would have to be divided that way anyway.
Okay.
I can't, I will be taking out more trees or whatever, but still, it would be about the same. So I didn't know whether the people that were here were wanting to see what type of homes I was putting there, so I made sure I took copies from Premier to let them know what the homes would look like. Because I'm not trying to offend anybody. I just would like to be able to have that land and it's earmarked for veterans also and that's why those names, that's why it's named that complex, because those individuals that it's named after, for instance, the Stewart name is on there because my mother was a steward and they all were out there 100 and some years, but they also had 20, 30 or more individuals that served in the military. Mr. Russell's brother served in the military. My brother was in Vietnam. My other brother's in the Air Force. My niece is in, was in the Navy. So when I heard the Thrive program was coming through and offering assistance in building, my application is in, in with Julie Hart and she and I are working very closely to be able to make this part of what it is I'm trying to accomplish. And then I wanted to earmark mine for veterans. And when I said that, I was told that they already have housing, there's no need for more housing for veterans, that they don't need to come out there, things like that. And I'm like, they have money to pay just as well. Yes, sir.
Is the home that's there now, does that stay?
Not necessarily. I need somewhere to stay until all of it is done.
But are we creating four lots or...
It's not livable, that's why I'm not staying here. It's not livable, just as...
That's not what our, our map looks like. We're creating three plus where the home is, the way it's highlighted. So there really is, I mean, the remainder is where the home is? It's what's left. You had indicated that there was an easement across to lot two. I thought that's what you said, two lot two. Maybe you said two lot two.
Yeah.
Because it's across the parent tract. Okay. That's probably what you said. I probably misheard you. Okay. You are wel, you are welcome to present anything you want to present as the petitioner.
Okay. I would like to present the homes. These, these homes are being considered by Thrive as good homes. They're premier and they're modulars. If you guys ever find all of these, would like to look at the home, and I'll put down if one, only three or four homes, just so that you know what they look like and I'm not trying to feel something while we're waiting. Because I mean, remind you, asking what color they were going to be, they're going to be gray just to, so that they won't be standing out too much. And then also, I wanted you guys to see how the surveyor put everything here, so where they go, what they're to look like, and how the surveyor has done this. And this, I remember, has, 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 has,
I wish for our neighborhood to stay as is. I and my neighbors feel very comfortable there. If these new houses come in and join us, we will lose our peace. You cannot keep this many people, I never heard how many there would be, in that small area. They're gonna move. One of the places they will move will be to my property. My property has had cattle on it for years. Therefore, I don't have the growth of trees that Denise does. So it's a lot easier to explore on my place than it is hers. Once they get onto my property, I'm responsible for them. So when they trip, fall, break an arm, I get the bill. Denise does not. My homeowners is a thousand dollars deductible. So I'm gonna eat a thousand every time they come across and break something. Right now, my cattle are nice and gentle, but kids have a way of changing all of that. A bad time for the kids to come across would be during birthing time. I could lose a calf all because a kid wanted to run my cow. Who's gonna foot that bill? Will I get reimbursed for my losses? Security is probably the greatest thing in the back of my mind, however. With all these strange people in the neighborhood now, I would have trouble sleeping. A few days back, the weather was hot. My air conditioning went out. I raised the window in my bedroom and set a fan in there like I've done for many years. I slept like a baby. But with new adults and new children living so close to me, I don't think I could do that. I don't want to change my lifestyle. I think many of my neighbors want to stay as they are as well. I'm not against veterans. But this location, in my opinion, is a bad location. No stores or gas stations are close. They're gonna have to have transportation and all that. And I don't want to hear, "Mr. Russell, could you give me a ride?" Not that I'm against giving a ride, but I stay very busy as is. This doesn't have to happen this way, though. Her plan could be rejected and the neighborhood continue as it is. I'm not the oldest in the neighborhood, but I have lived there the longest. I've seen many changes go through. The road in front of my house used to be gravelled, and now it's paved. That paving of the road benefited the entire neighborhood. Denise's road that she's wanting to construct, it's not gonna benefit the whole neighborhood. It's only gonna benefit her. And I think it's wrong to make a buck off of your neighbors. Make it elsewhere. The water, I think, has already been covered.
Do you understand the water's important?
I think they do.
Well, for the last two summers, it's been very dry, and we've run out of water. And we would have to dig deeper though, and that will cost us money.
A security system we do not have, that's a monthly bill that we're not paying right now, and we don't care to pay it.
Okay, one of the neighbors wrote this this since we were here because we know we didn't know if it would be an open forum or not. Are there gonna be three duplexes or what type of housing? And so you're calling for three houses or four? Three houses. Okay. Are they gonna be two-story? Yeah, I know you did. I'm asking you, are there going to be two-story or one? How many people are going to be in each house?
One family maybe, and there is one being either more than likely, um two kids would want that.
Well, they could put more than two children in there. They could put, they could put, you know, four. Okay, I'd like to know what that is. Five total? Okay, well. I think bottom line, what Michael is saying, that this is not the right spot for veterans to be in. Because there are no services for them. There's not a grocery store nearby. There's not a gas station. And soon we'll hear from Dee Reed, and she'll talk about the park that is right next door, but it's a private park. It won't be too private, but kids jump in the fence, because they will do that. And they'll have to explore that area as well, because it's such a small property. They have no way of getting to the park unless they're walking, unless they have cars. I don't know if they'll have cars or not. But we're talking about if there's five, that's fifteen more people, right? On the same system. So that's a lot. Kids flush toilets a lot and get dirty in these baths, so. Oh, there's there's more. He has he has two more questions. Will the county issue a legally binding guarantee to the person's most close to the proposed development? That the addition of the new structures will not in any way affect the water table of current residents' wells? And the third one, also the septic system not affect the groundwater quality for the livestock and the small streams nearby? Okay, is that enough? All right. Any questions?
Any questions from the plan commissioner? Thank you.
Thank you.
Tess Stevens, any address too?
If you could, for our record.
Thirteen fifty-five Locust Street. I do not live out in the Lost Creek area. My family heritage is in the Lost Creek area, but I do not live out in Lost Creek area. The names that she is naming are my grandfather's people. This is my grandfather's family over here. So I I hear both sides and I understand what's going on. So I have three essential questions. One, is it necessary for her property to be divided to have those homes put on there? Can she have those homes put on there and the lots stay the way that it is? And they have separate uh mailbox addresses with A, B, C, D, and E?
No.
Okay, so that's one question.
One one home per lot.
One home per lot, no matter how big the lot is. Okay.
If you had a lot of two-hundred acres, you could put one home on it.
I got you. Second question, who do we need to speak about, speak to? What committee is in charge of this water issue? Because none of them should have to worry about water. They should not ever have to worry about running out of water. If we are upgrading the sewer system here in town, there should equal, I don't know if that's the county commissioners or who is in charge, but there should be an equal upgrade in the outer lining county areas for water. Nobody should be running out of water in the United States. So and it shouldn't be on the burden of the individual to have to make sure that they can dig down or afford to dig down so they can have enough water. My dad lives in Davies County, and nobody in Davies County worries about water for all of their cattle or their farmland, and they've got hundreds of acres. So in Vigo County, we the water should not be an issue. That's really rubbing me raw. I'm not understanding uh what committee is responsible for that. I would like for y'all to tell me what committee is responsible for that, because that'll be the next meeting I go to. Um and I'm hearing that that is the bigger concern, even more over the security. Because truth be told, the houses that are out there, if they want to break in, they're gonna break in. If they gotta travel five miles down the road to come get you, they're gonna come and get you. So that's not, you know, the false sense of security is one thing, but the water is a big issue. Um and then the 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 third piece is with the new paved roads that come that came in to the country, did they not provide lighting for those roads as well? Uh isn't that part of the responsibility of Public Works to make sure that there's adequate lighting on a road just as well as it is for the road? Um they may not want light out there. You guys might want it dark. I don't know. But I'm just saying, there are things that that I'm hearing that they think is their cost that shouldn't be. And I understand, you know, wanting to have a certain manner of lifestyle for the remainder of your days. I can understand that. But some of the concerns that I'm hearing that helps cultivate their lifestyle, that they're thinking is gonna be an expense, shouldn't be their expense. So I need to know who's who's the people that need to be talked to about the water and security features for that area.
I believe in gener- in generally speaking, everything you're saying is correct. There's there should be no burden by somebody's development on people adjacent to that development. And the agencies that are that are responsible for both septic, which would which I I think that septic and water are monumental tasks that she will have to overcome in order for this to come to fruition. If they are the Department of Natural Resources, both state agencies, Indiana Department of Environmental Management.
So the county of Indiana is not responsible for county water?
You, Mark, you might speak to that, but I don't believe that we have jurisdiction over wells and sewage usage legally, I mean, at the settings. Well, yeah, which would be a county.
We don't have public water, I mean. When a person decides to buy a home, and it either comes from the well or not from the city water, that's a person's choice to buy that property, I mean, you know. And I don't think at this point it's it's feasible to expect you to have public water.
I'm not suggesting that there has to be public water everywhere in the county, but what I am suggesting that is that somewhere along the line, because water never stands still. So I'm just trying, no one should be running out of water. That's that's what I'm saying. So at some point in time, that is a an issue that has to be addressed by the county. I mean, they're only gonna be able to dig so far. Even if they pay for it, they're only gonna be able to dig down so far with whatever they pay for. So somewhere along the line, I would think that the county, I mean, why do we have county uh county commissioners and county council if they're not responsible for county issues? So people can't be running out of water. Do they run out of water out in Otter Creek?
Can. Where a person chooses to live, whether there's a well there or not, that is up to them. Now, if I bought a piece of property out in the country, it's my responsibility. If no other companies are involved in something, I don't think you put that burden on everybody else, because you.
I think what she's getting at, and I I agree with you, is is that even though the the county can dictate whether somebody buys a lot and whether they can get water or not, somebody shouldn't be able to move in next door and take the neighbor's.
Yeah, they shouldn't be fighting for water.
Correct, and I and I agree with that completely. I'm not sure that I know the answer to what what the to that question other than I do know that people who have adversely affected neighbors' waters have been found liable in many.
Exactly.
So that's that's an issue that she would have to overcome. She she is burdened with being able to provide services for her lots without adversely impacting the services of the surrounding houses. And it and it could be that the answer is a lawsuit. I don't know. I don't believe we have a city or a county agency that that jumps out there and says.
I I hear what you're saying, and and I'm reading between the lines, and I'm understanding what you're saying. And you're you're still pushing it off on on the people behind me. And I'm saying it's not the people behind me. So I'm gonna do some research. You guys won't have to worry about me getting under your hair just yet, because it'll take me some while. I got I got a plate full right now. But I'll figure out which one of the agencies is responsible, and then I'll be at those meetings on a regular basis, because nobody should have to fight for water.
I'm trying to figure out why to take your ass.
I I because I what I'm asked, what I what what I'm trying to ascertain.
I'm taking your comments different.
I I I get, no, I I get what you're saying. Sure, sure.
I'm taking your comments as you're saying that you think the county should provide water for every resident in this county. Is that what you're saying?
No, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is is there is a fundamental water issue out there. A well only contains so much water. So whether it's them right now fighting over how many houses she builds and 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 them two running out of water, or the the Lost Creek not having water for people coming over there when they go to that park, or it's Lost Creek Church, or the people that live three miles away from them further further south, they're gonna run out of water out there, and they're already experiencing shortages already. So what I'm saying is is that it's got to be the county's problem that there's going to be a water and there is an existing water shortage in that area, regardless who lives there.
I understand.
That's just like people going overseas to Africa. They go dig dig wells so the people can have water. We're we're not a third world country. So it's somebody's responsibility for there to be water. Because before there was a city of Terre Haute, there just was Vigo County.
Well, the only thing I the only thing I can say.
I I I'll I'll figure it out. I'll be back.
But let me clarify that a little bit, because I'm on your side. And and I think what Mark's saying, what you just said is is incorrect. It is not somebody's responsibility to make sure that there's water, because some places, there's not water. But it clearly is somebody's responsibility to make sure that somebody doesn't move in next door to my and take it or reduce his quality or quantity or everything above. I mean, there have been huge lawsuits over.
I I understand and I respect what you're saying. I do. I'm comprehending.
That's what Mark's trying to say there, and he believes that you think that the county ought to make sure there's water for everybody, and that's not possible.
What I what I, no, what I'm saying is, it has to be possible. Otherwise, you shouldn't, otherwise, there should be some places that are zoned off and and are not qualified habitable for living. There should not be sale of land where there cannot be access of water.
Well, there can be if somebody doesn't want water, if they want land to hunt on or something. I mean, that we're arguing about, we're we're on the same.
Okay, so now you're saying tomatoes, tomatoes. I'm talking about, I'll I'll find out. I'll be back. I'll be back.
All right, thank you. Next.
Yeah, I think with the water, uh I agree, it shouldn't be without water, okay? Like I I chose to put in a thirty-six inch well that was about sixty-five or seventy-foot deep. Some people chose to put in six inches. Some chose to put in four inches way back then. Some dug their own wells. Uh I think the issue is is where the water table is now, and then putting three more dwellings on there. And what's that gonna do to the water table? And I think what she's trying to say is is the county's got a responsibility. If experts are are talked to about that issue, that the county has a responsibility to say, "Hey, maybe there shouldn't be any more dwellings right out there." I think that's what she's trying to say.
Okay, okay. Could you give us your name and address, just so we've got it on our record?
Oh, my name is Mark DeBrensky, and I live at forty-one fifty-five North Hunt Street.
Thank you. Okay, all right, thank you.
My name's Crystal Todd. I live at sixty-four forty-five East Haythorne Avenue. To the well issue, we had to have four wells, four drills on our property when we bought it, and we went to ninety-eight feet. So there's water. So there's water there, I understand how the underground aquifer works. I believe there was an email sent, there should have been an email sent from Brendan Kearns. He did his own walkabout out there, um, for soil and water, and he is a hundred percent against this property. Um, due to that fact of the water issue, and so that was, that was the concern that I wanted to bring up. But I did discuss it with him, and I know he sent an email to somebody, I don't know who it was sent to. Um, but he said, according to soil and water, as far as he's concerned, that it's not feasible to have that many homes out there. So that was my concern.
Thank you.
Good evening, um, Deanna Reed, two hundred Robin Wood Lane, Terre Haute. I am representing the Lost Creek Community Grove. Uh, it is a historical location that has been there for, uh, at least a hundred and twenty years to, I'm sorry, let me see. Uh, that provides historic, uh, education to the community regarding the Lost Creek Settlement, which was the oldest and largest black settlement in the state of Indiana. This location is where the community learns about this history, so that it is not erased or lost or whitewashed. This is a very vital part of our, of our Vigo County history as well as Indiana's history. And we believe that we are on the same water vein with this new subdivision, and that we would then, our water would then be depleted, forcing us to probably have to close, because we have significant cultural events, we have educational events, children come out for, for, um, school events and learn about the, the settlement. We have lots of events that are held there, and we are very concerned about the water. Drilling a new well would actually be problematic for us as a not-for-profit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm on the board with Dee, my name is Kirk Phillips, Linda, she's also on the board, Lost Creek, Restoration Preservation Foundation. We're in opposition, letting you know we're in opposition. Here's our president.
We're just, um, I'm Linda Noble, I live at five oh two South Dodds Lynn. Our main concern is the water, our main concern is the water table, because it is vain. I, I know where the vein goes, and it, um, because I was raised out there and just down the road. Um, and so there is times when there is not much water, but that's the choices that we made, my parents made that choice. And we have dug wells and we do give water, but that's the choice that, that's, that's made, but it would be detriment, detrimental to the Grove. Because we are non-profit.
Thank you.
And I'm Kirk Phillips, twenty-three fifty Spruce Street, Terre Haute, Indiana.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to this issue? Go ahead.
Good evening, thank you for your time, I'm Michael Ege with the Loyal Veterans Battalion, located at one thousand South Fourteenth Street. I currently reside at fifty-two seventy-five East Deer Drive, Terre Haute. Uh, I'm here on behalf of Dr. Batten, uh, in support of her rezoning or, or, um, uh, re- redevelopment, let me put it that way, of this property. Uh, what she is offering to do is build three homes there for veterans. For some reason, the people that are in opposition to this think that, one, the veterans will not have automobiles. That the veterans will come in with a family and allow their children to run wild. It's been my experience that if there's a military family, and they are long-term situations in this housing, this is not transitional housing, which I'm very familiar with, having the LVB, Loyal Veterans Battalion, we have already built one transitional house here in Terre Haute, and are currently in the process of building another one. So I understand what transitional housing is, but Dr. Batten is offering permanent housing to veterans that she's, that, that are helping these people find a place to live, find a place to live that's not in her city. Find a nice quiet place to live, and I don't understand the opposition. As far as the wells go, it seems like Dr. Batten has already addressed that issue, having her well that would be drilled down to eighty-eight feet, as opposed to a twenty-foot well and a fifty-foot well. This far exceeds the other wells in this area, so the water table that is at eighty-eight feet will not be affecting any of the water table that's at fifty feet or twenty feet, or anywhere in between that. So it's not like it's gonna be taking water away from that. This well seems to be, or the water problem, seems to be the biggest issue. Well, Dr. Batten has already done the study, has a study for the well, and there's proven, and, and the, the well digger, has proven that there is adequate water for everybody in that area. Now, I've heard other things about security. I don't know about this gentleman over here, but I personally live next to a veteran, I'm a veteran myself. I would rather have a veteran as a neighbor than a non-veteran. I rely on my neighbors. When I first moved into my neighborhood on Wonder Lake, twenty years ago, I did not know my neighbors. Now I know my neighbors very well, and it took some time. But I now have a neighbor across the cove that has cancer, that we go over and mow his lawn, take food to the family. I have another neighbor that has Parkinson's disease. He needs something done around his house, he gives me a call, I get it done for him. Neighbors support neighbors. It's scary sometimes when a new person moves into your neighborhood. But knowing that they're a veteran should at least give you some sense of security, and knowing that this person has fought for you and will fight for you in the future. So do not deny this because it's three houses. Think of this as three veteran houses that will come and be there a long, long time and do nothing but benefit that community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to this issue? Sure.
I thank the gentleman for his comments, but I don't think Mr. Russell was talking about veterans when he was talking about people actually coming and maybe drum jumping his fence, getting hurt on his property, uh, him having to pay for the medical bills, because legally that's what he's gonna have to do. Doesn't matter whether it's children of a, one of the families or a veteran's family, that's, that's gonna happen.
Second of all, as far as the three houses on there, okay, and I take exception with the thing about the water table. About going down eighty feet isn't gonna affect the water table at twenty-five feet. If the water, if, if you're having trouble with water out there to begin with, let's face it. The county requires you to do a percolation test for your septic system. That percolation test is to make sure that the, it can drain down, if not, you have to have what they call a subsurface drainage ditch put in, which I had to do, which was a- added money. But point of it is, it does affect it. Take, take a cup of water and pour it in a, pour it in a flower pot, where does it go? Does it stay at the top? No, it goes down. Same thing, oh, it sucks, sucks, it sucks down below if you're sucking, it's gonna suck it from the top. So that takes care of the water thing as far as I'm concerned. Then there is, there is a possible issue there. Like I told Mr. Russell, if it was a one-person house, I probably have no problem with it. You're talking about a little more than an acre and a half for all that property, okay? Putting, putting three, three houses on there, three septic systems. I don't know how big the septic system is anymore, I had to put in a thousand foot, square foot septic system when I put mine in. Anyway, that's my concerns, I just wanna let you know.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Sure.
Well, we don't know how the families will be vetted that are going to go into these homes. Nobody seems to answer that question. We don't know if these veterans are going to have cars, nobody has said if they're going to have jobs. What was said was they can always get transportation from West Central Thrive, they have a bus that can come and pick them up to go wherever they need to go. Well, when you have three families, there's a lot of traveling that needs to occur, to the grocery store, to the park, to the gas station, but they don't have cars, so I guess that wouldn't be one of them. Will we have a voice in deciding who gets put in the house? I was told that they would not be probably local people, if it was one individual, it was probably local. But if it's a family, they could choose someone from anywhere in the United States. That to me gives red flags, because I like to live in Indiana because it's a God-fearing state. And east coast and west coast, not so much, I know I'm making a generalization, but they live a lot different than what we do, we're very peaceful, we love our quiet, we love to watch the cows at night and the birds. It will be a lot noisier on the Batten land with children, three families of children running around. I have nothing against children. I taught school for more than thirty years, elementary school, middle school, high school. My husband was a teacher for thirty-eight years. We've both have taught Sunday School at our church forever. We never stopped. Well, I retired, okay, when I was seventy-five, I finally retired. We just want peace and quiet our last years. We do not want to have to be worrying about if one of their children got into the barn and played with matches. Who would have to pay for that? We would. My dad was a veteran from World War Two. He fought in Germany. And his two brothers alongside him. Michael's great-grandfather fought in the Civil War, Bushnell. We love veterans, we honor veterans, we love what they're doing for our country. But I will find it frightening to have three families living next door to me, and I don't know where they came from, I don't know what kind of morals they have. Not everyone has the morals that most of the people in Indiana have. Uh, there are a lot of them that are a lot more freewheeling, and I know there are great veterans, but there are also some veterans with mental problems. And I don't, if I had a say-so in the vetting, I think my husband would agree with this, can you hear me? He can't hear me. I gotta get right up to his ear for, he, he doesn't know what's going on here, and that's why I really feel for him. Ever since he found out about this, he's been a grumpy old man. Because he knows he's gonna be worried all the time about whether or not his cows are safe, and whether or not he can continue farming, which is his true love. And I just don't wanna see anything change. Denise, we love you, we're double cousins, we love you. But this is something that Mother Murr would not approve of, she'd be going like this. Well, yeah, well, you called Murr your mother too.
Okay, let's, let's not, let's not go back and forth, if, if we could, if there's, if there's nothing to, go ahead, you can go ahead.
Nope, okay.
One more thing, and then I'm gonna allow the planning commission to weigh in.
I worked for the VA, I wrote the VA a one-point-five million dollar grant when I worked at the VA in Louisiana in the women's clinic. I worked for the VA in Los Angeles. I worked with the HUD batch individuals who were looking for housing, the homeless veterans who were looking for housing. I know exactly who it is that I'm trying to put in these houses. I worked with them, I provided for them, and I made sure that districts of this and sixteen had three-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand dollars per women's clinic to make sure that those veteran women with PTSD from military sexual trauma or from battle were well taken care of. I know who I'm putting in there.
Okay, thank you, one more.
Thanks for having us, my name's William Caldero, I'm at eighteen thirty-seven West Oak Grove Drive here in Terre Haute, Indiana.
Terrence Drive, six-five seven-five North Thirty Fifth Street.
I'm the commander of the Disabled American Veterans here in town, it's the vice commander. It, it just sounds like a lot of negative stereotyping towards the veteran community, no offense. Um, it, it's just bottom line, she's just trying to do something really nice for the community. I understand, I don't live out there, I'm not a water table expert, um, but if they are experts, she's already had someone look at it. It sounds like they've done their due diligence, um, so if all it is, is just having someone else come back out and make sure, verify, I don't know what else there is to do.
My understanding is, you're here only to decide whether she can subdivide that. Then area planning has to decide whether the well is a problem, the septic is a problem. She has to meet all the criteria before she can build a home there, right?
For building a home, yes.
Just because you approve subdivision does not mean she'll ever be able to build a home there.
That is correct.
And secondly, I have horses, I've been around, I grew up on a farm in Black Hawk, Indiana. You have fences, you put up no trespassing signs, if they trespass on you, you call the law and have it stopped. Most, most veterans' children are raised under more discipline than any child probably in this county. It's part of, it's part of the military. Are there bad veterans? Yes, there's bad veterans. Some of them have PTSD, go crossways, get on love, drugs. But to discount it, because there might be a veteran there that might have some children that might scare your cow, I, I'm, I've guessed that children will be more afraid of their cow than the cow is afraid of their children. But what we're talking about here is whether you would subdivide this land for this lady. For her to proceed any further is not for you guys to decide, is my understanding. Area planning has to take it from here. So it appears to me she has met the criteria, she needs to get the septic.
We are area planning.
Well.
And it, and.
But she has to re, she has to apply before she can build.
Now, let me, if, if I could, let me offer a couple of comments, you guys, because I'm, we're, we're done with this as far as I'm concerned. First of all, I don't believe for one second that anybody has come up here and indicated that they are anti-veteran. I don't believe that for one second, for you to suggest that offends me. I don't believe there's any negative stereotype to veterans, I believe, I believe because for twenty-eight years, I've driven by Mike Russell's house four times a day probably and waved at him riding his tricycle mower down to, to cut grass or to work his crops. They like their life there, they like what's going on. They like what's going on there, and they don't want it to change. And I understand that. And part of area planning's responsibility is to make sure that we act in the best interest of the community, not just, not just the individual property, but the entire community. And it is my personal opinion that this subdivision would be detrimental to the Wall Street area. So if anybody else has any more comments, I'm happy to listen to them. Otherwise, I want the planning commission to discuss it, and I'll entertain a motion. Okay. Any planning commission discussion?
I, I'd like to commend you for one, couple veterans, and thank you, Ben, for all that you do. That certainly is not what I'm worried about. I'm worried with this water, and that's what's affecting that one. And that's my opinion.
Okay. Anyone else?
John, your comments about, I'm trying to put this in other areas. Like if this wasn't in, this wasn't so many people here, and this was in a different area. What, what is your opposition? Because if it's water, we're saying she can't affect them on water, and we don't control that. I'm trying to figure out where your.
My opposition is I think.
Is it about water, or is it just, it's not about water?
It's about, it is detrimental to the community. There are many, many areas in the community that there shouldn't be certain things. And in, and in this neck of the woods, there damn sure shouldn't be duplexes. And I don't believe that there should be three new homes, and four homes if you keep the old one on one-point-four-six acres next to the.
Yeah, I agree. I, I would agree with the duplexes.
I got a question. Okay, what, what is it that makes you believe that you can determine who moves where?
I don't believe that.
Well, you just said you did. You said it would be detrimental to the community.
That's, that's what I believe. I have a right to believe whatever I believe.
Detrimental, yes, you do, but detrimental, you haven't explained how it's detrimental. Is it detrimental because there's three homes sitting that are new, and it's not something you're used to seeing every day? And again, you say veterans, you're afraid your kid is going to come get your cow, who can walk on your land anytime?
If, if you're going to address, if you're going to address the commission, address the commission, not the audience. Give us your name and address for the.
My name is Douglas Duck. I live at fifteen-eleven South Thirteenth and a Half Street, Terre Haute, Indiana. Okay, I've been here in Terre Haute now eighteen years. I've lived all over the world. I've seen other communities, I've seen other states. I've participated in board meetings for California, Detroit, Philadelphia, and it all seems to be the same sound. Someone wants to control who can go where. What this lady is trying to do here is obviously a very good thing. Now, you have an issue with the water, understand that, but you cannot tell people they can't go somewhere because you feel uncomfortable. That is not your purview here at this, this meeting. Smile if you want to, sir, but this is the truth.
I didn't say that.
You don't get to say who can live where. Those days are gone.
I didn't, I didn't once.
And I'm a twenty-year veteran, and I've raised four families. Right now, I'm raising a new family, two doctors on the way. So don't be afraid of veteran families, because like the man said, we come from the military, we raise our kids with this, not this.
I'm proud of you.
Okay? But it doesn't sound like it, doesn't sound like it. Thank you.
Thanks. Entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
To approve.
To approve the subdivision. Do you have a second? All in favor? The motion fails. We did not, we did not approve the subdivision. Yeah. Yes.
I'm sorry. It sounds like everybody approved the vote, voting for it, except one.
That's correct.
So the vote has to be unanimous?
You have to have a majority of the planning commission.
Right?
Yes.
Yes, you have to have eight.
You have to have eight votes, yes.
You have to have eight votes.
You have to have a majority of the commission, yes.
Now, first, you can make eight people not to vote.
If there's only eight people at the meeting, if there's fourteen people, that, no, that's not right. You have to have eight yes votes for a motion to pass, and this didn't get eight votes, so fails. So we're going to move on to our next agenda item.
And that sounded like a positive mind.
Do we have to move on, or can there be another motion?
You can, you can do whatever you want.
Well, we have to set a recommendation.
We've satisfied, there is no recommendation, it's open. It fails. The only thing you could move is to subdivide.
I would, I would make a motion to.
I don't think you can make that.
I would make a motion to tape.
It's already failed.
Wait.
I've been through this before here. If I can. I've voted against something that was only aimed at the CEO.
Right.
And I think you are the one that made the motion, can we offer a known recommendation?
We don't recommend subdivisions. We approve them or deny them. You can do it on zoning, not on subdivisions.
Can there be another motion? That's all I was asking.
No.
Okay. That was my question.
Either passes or fails, so it fails. Move on. Next item under subdivisions, county rezoning, document number forty-seven, file twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-four, Innovation Grove.
The property has a common address. The property has a common address built with a large size, parents' park, about three-hundred acres. In some dis, with a, with subdivision, so the subdivision is a southern property, approximately thousand acres, and the infrastructure is equal to four hundred acres. Forty-nine-one-five-six-six acres, surveyor, Hopsen. Requested subdivision forty-nine-one-five-six-six acres, creating green laws, intended to This is a primary request, if there wants one in two, a primary and secondary request of block A. So, health department has approved, so it will be available. Water is available. We did not hear any response to our, our, my front, airport, the airport, the, uh, facility plan. So, we'll wait to hear from them, see if they have. Uh, the lobster, see the member lotsized, apartment areas, facilities, city will fire in a funding agency in this location. They noted their report, they had trouble coordinating with the safety, uh, property to the city, the district, so need approval from the city for the fire. So to clarify, the initial request, the subdivision reserve, is for a whole of block A, and a final requirement. Seating secondary group of block A, allowing creation of legal reserve, being used for zone, is a second. This will allow the zoning to be approved for, on the reserve, there'll be flexibility with the, uh, yes, approval, like, whole blocks, without any, there is a, or, this will be a future zone verification requirement, abandoned, the subdivision is closed. So it is assumed that the jointing laws, uh, that will be, is for potential benefit of the, the, that is not necessarily a part of the, of sole, the utilities, it's, uh, the development as proposed, is a permanent zone condition, upper local structure condition or put into purpose capacity. Further, the safety measures being needed, the safety precautions, uh, comment or, what? Initial group, this request may, will be addressed, fires secondary group of block two. Property, of course, being, uh, tone, fire elements, subdivision, approved, and, uh, favorable on the primary, block two, on, it will be fires secondary. I've recovered, uh, and, uh, 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 stated, uh, 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 also offering favorable on the primary and secondary, block A, lights, uh, reserve.
Sure.
So, as you know, the property owners are, are, as well, know, knowledge, those uses is, uh, patient, uh, 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 certain uses are all, uh, cultural, in these areas, identified, uh, 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 the district does intend to use the property, certain school, issues, uh, 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 surrounding uses are, 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 area has, 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 ability to use the variety, and has, thank, thank, the last, okay, this is, 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 so we have the capable recognition, that should be, I mean, that should be, sign, and existing...
Mr. Felling?
Hello, everyone.
Don't, don't leave, we may need you again.
Okay. I'll, I'll be quick on this one, hopefully. Again, Eddie Felling, Lyndon Felling Law Firm, I'm here on behalf of Ms. Price. She is not here tonight, I wish she could have been. She's a great lady, she's got a daycare that's already in operation on the north side, she's wanting to expand that operation. Obviously, childcare here locally is something that we are in dire need of. I can vouch for that, having a two and a five-year-old. She was on vacation, she was gonna cut her vacation short to come, I told her, I thought hopefully we could handle it this evening. But what's gonna be great about this location, again, it's just a little bit to the west of where the Great Dane facility is. As you may have seen, we've got a new facility that's gonna go right next to Great Dane, so a lot of new jobs up that way. I think it's gonna be a really good place for those working individuals to be able to have daycare services available to them. Shouldn't affect any of the surrounding properties, and again, the only real, the reason why we're changing it from C one to C four, county has some, another layer of these childcare facilities, it's a little bit different than the city. This allows her to have more children on site, so we would ask for favorable recommendation.
Any questions from the planning commission? Anyone here speaking in opposition to this? I'll entertain a motion. Those in favor? Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you all.
Back to our unresolved vote, it would, it would seem to me that we have a, that we still have a motion and a second on the floor, it just has not been completely voted on, would you agree? He's requesting to retract his motion, do we have consent for that? Those in favor? Aye. So the motion is off the pole. He made a motion to table. You'll find out. I wanna do it in just a second. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye. No. I don't, I don't think it should be taken. It would die for lack of a motion, wouldn't it? I mean, or you can move to approve it again, and, and Martin vote. And if we table it, can come back, like, for next month?
Well, we, if one person says, then, well, things, we have, of course, we don't know it.
It, the tabling thing, everybody voted, didn't get enough votes, so it's not gonna be taken. So somebody either moves for approval again, and I'm gonna vote no again, or, or you move to not prove it, and, yes, it's not dying for lack of a motion, so, what's your pleasure?
I just have one quick question. I, I don't know the rules on returning, I know, if you get denied, you've been away a year, come back, and something, you have to kind of change it. What would our rules be here regarding, is there a difference if it dies due to lack of a motion versus being denied?
Not an expert. For lack of a motion.
Is it? Okay.
Yeah, I don't... My issue is, that's why I would like to table, to check, if, 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 if I'm the person to vote, to vote, we will vote, I'll vote.
We don't have a motion to vote, if somebody has to make one.
He withdrew it.
I just have a problem with a person, you know, she, somebody, someone, they, they look at the problem before. And the guy said, is this correct? He said, I've never heard that, twenty-one is, we've all been around, far, nowhere else, where it gets dry conditions, and sometimes there's really going to be dry conditions for another one.
That's my point, you know, it's like, that's, 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 that's not for that. I don't think that's...
That's the burden of the property owner.
That's right.
I would like to see better housing. Well, that's kind of the role of, of this, because it's...
We're, we're looking at single-family housing, it could be for veterans, it could be for families, it could be for anyone. My, my concern with water is, we have separate property owners. If we say no because there's not enough water, are we saying that you own this property, but you don't have rights to use what water is there, versus somebody who's already there? I personally believe it's the burden of the property owner, if you provide, and if it's not there, the investment fails. You are investing your money, you do your due diligence. The only concern I have, as far as impact, is would you have an historic site next door? That would be my...
Historic.
The historic site. I don't know that we have any rules. If we're using federal dollars, going through the federal stuff, they're gonna look at all those historic sites, and they're gonna tell us what we can, can't do next door, with the federal dollars. This is private money, if there's no money going in, it's, it's do as you wish, but I personally believe the water issue, I think the owner of this property has as much right to what water is there. Indiana is very vague on proper water rights. Out west, they have something in place saying who gets how much, you can buy water rights, you can sell water rights. It's a more scarce thing, it's, it's not scarce in Indiana.
How do we know the commission, or, or, or?
We're not gonna hear the... We already have wells going dry, so they are, they are needed as well.
But the baby has a shallow well.
Yeah, my, my personal belief is generally older, shallow wells. And, like, I reviewed some of the well records while we were sitting and waiting around. We've got a water table about ten, and various layers of sand and gravel, and shale and hard sand, and it appears, to me, there's probably good water there, but, you know, that's a quicker view. If, if there's poor water there, it's gonna...
Or you can still suck the water, and somebody might call it, if the water is not there.
It, it can't side, it'd be...
Not really, it's a real fair balance.
To me, it's about the detrimental effect it has on the area, and if we are not supposed to weigh in with our conscience and our beliefs in, in what we're affecting, they might as well just put robots up here and give you a list of this is what you gotta do if this is the case, and this is, we're, we're here because we have a...
I, I agree with that.
And my, and my opinion is... No, the, the only thing that's about water is, is that if, if they go in there and drill a thirty-six inch diameter, eighty-foot deep well, and Mike Russell's well's dry, she's in trouble. But that's not our fault, and it certainly counts as troubling. Absolutely.
I just wanted to check, you know, what happens if that...
Yeah, oh yeah. Right. I didn't know what you said. Yeah. All those in favor? Motion passes. You were leaving anyway.
Is it, it does due to lack of motion?
Yeah.